Good afternoon, everybody. Everybody back with me now?[3.44][3.44][laughter] I'm gonna try to do this thing.[8.01][8.01][laughter] I would like to welcome everyone and hope everybody had a Happy New Years. So...
Yep.
And the first thing I would like to do is, uh, we all stand. I'm gonna ask the chairman, the previous chairman, Barry here, to give us a prayer and then be led by the pledge of allegiance.
All right. Be happy to it. Lord, we thank you for the excitement of a new year. We just pray that everything that we do this year will bring you glory, that will benefit the citizens, and that you will help us to represent everyone as you would have us to represent them, Lord. Lord, we just pray for our community. We pray for jobs. We pray for growth. And we pray that, again, in all things, that you will be glorified. And we turn this all over to you, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I also would like to thank Shelley Berry here for a great job he's done as chairman for 2015.
Thank you.
Now, I would like for Mr. Ken Clark to stand and repeat after me, please, while I read him the oath. Raise your right hand. Okay. I... State your name, please.
I, Ken Clark.
Do solemnly swear that I will faithfully perform the duties of the commissioners.[111.12][111.12][laughter] Solemnly swear...
Solemnly swear.
That I will...
I will.
Faithfully perform...
Perform.
The duties of...
The duties of...
Commissioners of this city.
Commissioners of this city.
And that I will support and defend the charter thereof.
I will defend and support the charter thereof.
As well as the Constitution and law of the state of Georgia.
As well as the Constitution and law of the state of Georgia.
And the United States of America.
And the United States of America.
Okay. Thank you. Maybe seated. And I would like for you to sign this, please. Saying that you swore. Okay. A few minutes. We're gonna get... Okay. The call meeting to order and reading is from Section 217 of the City Charter as the first organization meeting. The vice chairman elect the previous year will be confirmed by vote to succeed the... to the position of the chairman. But because the 2015 vice chairman, Phil Neesmith, is no longer on the board, the commissioner will have to elect a chairman for the 2016. So I would like to ask for a motion and a second to elect a chairman.
Motion to appoint Henry Crevis, chairman, second.
Motion passed unanimously. Okay. Let me raise your hand, all in favor of...
Ken, you're voting. You get the vote to here.
Okay. So it passed unanimously. Okay. So now, I will turn it over to the new chairman.
Like the vice chairman.
You got to do that.
I like it.[231.84][231.84][laughter]
Finished.[234.44][234.44][laughter]
Thank you, Ben. Good job. Good job.
Thank you.[238.34][238.34][applause]
I'll move over to the hot seat.[243.22][243.22][laughter]
You move a bit, man.
Good job.
Thank you.
Welcome, Ken.
No, I can do that.
Election of vice chairman for 2016. Who have a motion?
Motion nominee, James Colston, second.
All in favor? And the motion passed.[264.89][264.89][laughter] Appointment of city attorney. I think we've already discussed that, as Walker Hubbard Grayburg.
Make a motion.
Say that.
All in favor? Motion passed.
You can stand.[280.54][280.54][laughter]
All right. Now, we're gonna get to the regular meeting. Uh, welcome, everyone. We're gonna approve the amendments with changes, if any, of the December 7th, 2015 regular meeting.
Mr. Chairman, these were an email to us, and I've read them, and I think we all have, and I make a motion that we approve them as presented.
I've said it.
All in favor? Motion passed. Second is approved of the amendments with changes, if any, of the December 30th, 2015 call meeting.
Motion to approve.
Say it.
All in favor? Motion passed. There's no old business, so we're gonna go to the new business, and it's a letter of intent with Municipal Gas of Georgia.
This is a letter of intent that we will change to what we're currently using as our gas buyer, buy gas for the city of Hawkinsville. We use Municipal Gas of Georgia. And this letter gives them the authority to start talking with, uh, gas companies on our behalf. And so they'll be buying gas on our behalf, uh, instead of the C-Gas, our former supplier.
We have a motion for that.
So move.
Second.
All in favor? Motion passed. Uh, city managers update.
Uh, we need to appoint a new member to the Jointly Own Natural Gas Board.
I don't have that on my ass. That's not on my ass. Anyway, okay. Point new member to the Jointly Own Natural Gas Board. Who do we want?
We are talking about the question that we keep Phil on there. He is legally able to do that since he is a past commissioner. And, uh, I'll make the motion to keep Phil on board.
Do we have a say? All in favor? Phil's it. Now, we got city managers update.
All right. Uh, we've got some...
We're having discussion.
Yeah. Do you want a discussion on that?
Uh, nothing against Phil or anything. I...I understand your concern of having him on, uh, keeping him on the board, but I sort of feel like that we need somebody to represent the city that's the...the new city commissioner. Uh, I mean, either one, any of us here, uh, I just feel that we just need new representation on that.
Okay. Well...
How do you all want to do that? Uh, recall for a vote, or... Or we...how do you... Mr. Chairman, I believe that you... I think Phil's got a lot of experience, but, I mean, I guess we have to vote on it, I guess. That's all I'm saying. Don't we do?
You have to close the discussion and vote. If there's no more discussion.
Any more discussion on...on before we vote on... I mean, I see where Ken's coming from, I really do, but we're in such a transitional phase right now with different things going on that Phil has the expertise...
With the gas.
With the gas, yes.
Yeah.
With the gas. That none of us have, and none of us could, for years, get coupled up on. That's the only thing. They've had some turnover on their board as well, on the right, with deaths and sickness and everything else. So they really are...their numbers are down with experienced people, so...
How long is this appointment? For? A year? One year? I...I tend to agree with that. I say because of the experience, spirits, let's...let's keep things as they are for one year and then revisit this again next year and, um, look at...look at where we stand, so... Um, I'm...I'm gonna keep my vote like it was.
Because that's same thing, Lord.
Okay.
It's unanimous.
Well, it's not unanimous. I mean, Ken needs to be in there, staying or running against.
Okay, so we got it out of the way. Okay.
Call for a new vote.
Okay. Let's call for a new vote for, uh, keeping Phil on the board.
I guess the previous motion and second still, do we...or do we need to do that again?
No, I think you can do that in the open after discussion. We've had our discussion, and now it's time for a vote.
Okay.
Okay. So... I'm asking for a vote. Okay. So they... Unanimous.
Not unanimous. We got one that's saying...
One opposed.
One opposed. Right. Okay. Okay.
There we go.
Oh, we got it. Okay. Now, city managers update.
Uh, old item from December, uh, and this was emailed to you earlier as well, and you may have gotten this, uh... But, um, the items from December are really the Highland Avenue neighborhood, CDBG grant, which is water and sewer. Uh, that's going on, uh, continuing to go on, is going to Lockton, as well as Sixth Street. And, uh, in the next few weeks, you will see some streets that will be partially blocked as they continue to do, uh, the sewer part of that project. All the water side is already done. Now they're coming through with sewer, so that project has been along. Of course, with the weather the last couple of weeks, it's been slowed down significantly, but, uh, they're...they're back at it this week. The River Market re-roofing, the roofing is done, the, um, guttering has been put up. Uh, I do have an invoice, which I'm...I'm holding at the moment, uh, until they come down and we walk the property and ensure that it's, uh, not leaking and it's to our satisfaction from a workmanship standpoint. So we're in contact with, uh, Clay, uh, roofing on that, Beckford. The Sixth Street sidewalk, I've got an update from Lance. We've got two options for the sidewalk that we talked about for Sixth Street, which goes all the way from, uh, Industrial Boulevard, uh, down to, I think it's Railroad Street, that whole length of the cemetery. Uh, one is curving gutter, and you see the price of that curving gutter is estimated $152,045. And that's...that's the total piping, storm piping of all that section right there, putting in curving guttering. Uh, so significant cost for pipe and concrete and all the work for that. Option number two is a sidewalk with no curving gutter. It's just your basic sidewalk, but you do have to do some grading and some piping there, uh, for that at $92,050. So that's Lance's estimate, uh, for the two options for that project. And so I submit that as, uh, we were discussing that earlier, probably, uh, in the upcoming splotch that we're, uh, we'll start putting projects together for that. And then we'll need to start working on that and work sessions on what we want for the 2016 splotched opportunity.
Are we making any application for the 2016 CBDG grant?
None at this time.
I mean, I think every sidewalk we've done has fallen under a CBDG, so that may be something.
Could be. Okay. And it's in the right location, I think, uh, for that, so we can look at that as well, for Lance.
I don't know what the deadlines on that are, but I'm thinking...
I think April.
Like April. So we might wanna look at that pretty quick.
Okay.
Now, I think it's a project that needs to be done. Again, the question is, we just gotta find a way to pay for it.
Sure. That's right. New items for January. Our harness facility has about 150 horses. Um, we're...we're expecting about another 70 horses to come in this week. The warm weather that they've had up north that we've experienced as well has kept horses further up north in their, uh, training facilities, uh, but now that it's beginning to turn cold, uh, they're starting to drip down this way. So we...we expect to have 70 more in the next few weeks, uh, heading this way. Uh, so we're excited about that. Everybody...we have a lot of new horsemen down this year. They're excited. They...they like the way things look and how well the tractor's working for them. So, uh, we're...we're really excited about what's going on out there. Uh, you can see our utilities, uh, for November and December, we sort of had the same process there, but we were able to take care of it pretty well, uh, with, uh, with door knockers. Mr. Bob Bennett, uh, to our auditor. Uh, he came in Thursday of last week, Wednesday or Thursday, and, uh, talked with Judy, Benny, and myself, and gave us an executive overview of the audit. It is prepared. It's ready. I got those this morning. Uh, so, uh, at your convenience, come by. I'll give you a copy. We'd like for you to have those prior to the February meeting so that we can have a very executive session summary of that, uh, of that audit. But everything looks good. Everything is, uh, T's are crossed, I's are dotted, and as you imagine, Mitchell did a terrific job getting them the information. Judy was very involved in that, but, uh, they were very pleased to do the work for us. Uh, so we have that for our next meeting. Will be, uh, Mr. Bob Bennett presenting that for us. Our L-Meg for 2016 was submitted, and, uh, so that's sent to the DOT. And, uh, the top five, you can see right here, Cometa Drive, Warren Street, Fifth Street, Southwood Street, and then Dooley Street, and then, uh, I think further in the, uh, information is the whole list. I think I have like 12 streets. Uh, and we still have a little bit of money left over for this year that we can apply to streets for next year, so we can add that, that's about $9,000 to, to 2016.
And streets are something we also need to look at in the next splotch as well.
That's right. Okay. So, um, so that's...that's sort of the... All of us know and are reminded of, uh, what we were going through in December with Mitchell. And, uh, we miss...we miss him, and, uh, we're...we're talking constantly about him, uh, as well. And I think that really goes to the gas discussion as well, is that, uh, losing Mitchell, a real, very knowledgeable on gas and all the intricacies of gas, and we make a lot of phone calls to help us catch up to all that. Um, did a great job with that, but, uh, uh, we will have his position will be advertised in the newspaper starting tomorrow. You'll see that in the local paper as well. Uh, so, uh, we are taking applications for finance director starting, uh, starting tomorrow. So you'll see that. So, uh, Mitchell did a lot. He did gas, he did human resources, he did, uh, insurance for the city, and, uh, so, um, we're gonna miss his expertise, for sure. Uh, the next page, uh, you'll see, uh, our work orders, uh, that you see, 129 for the month of December, which is a little low, but we had a lot of holidays, uh, based in December. Then our following page is a overview accounts right there. And, uh, you can see a couple of large ones right there, which we'll make contact with them, uh, to get that worked back off. And, uh, you know, we've enjoyed a short list for a long time. Uh, with the holidays coming up, that kind of caused us on that, so... Any questions on those? Our next tab there are the charts that you normally see each month that shows us the, um, uh, the track that we're on, uh, year by year. Our general fund, you'll see that our green line is 2015, 2016. And, uh, you can see it's off a little bit from last year. Uh, and one reason it jumps up is that we noted there's property taxes are received in December. So you see that. One thing that is, uh, not on there that was there the prior year is our loss, the local option sales tax, uh, was not put in the December number right here, whether it was the holidays or whether it was, uh, what's going on there. But if...we didn't...we chose to leave it just as, um, we pull the reports down off of our accounting system. And, uh, that's why we'll...we'd like to do that. So, uh, we're still in great shape. Uh, property tax was up about $30,000, uh, last year. Uh, so it was improved from last year, but, uh, we are missing the lost dollars that were in there for last year. So... The next is your water and sewer, and you see a big increase in that. These are dollars. These are not...this is not water. Gallons. And, uh, you know, we supplied H&amp;B an awful lot of water. They were building their new well, and they were on our water for a long time. They...this is where they were paid for all that water they used, so we told them to keep using it. We can make all they want to use, so... And they did. They used not a big gallon of that.
Wow. Go...go back to property tax, Fred. You said we're up $30,000 this year over last year. We didn't...we didn't raise the mileage rate. I don't know of a whole bunch of new...what are you...what are you attributing that to?
Uh, that's just a number that we pulled out from last year, was $241,000, and this year was $275,000. And we haven't collected all it...we'll have another paper.
It could be a timing thing.
It could be a timing thing.
That'll be interesting to see next month.
Okay. That'd be good. Okay. So, uh, water there. Uh, gas fund, you can see that the...the red line, which was last year, if you remember, it got colder in November of last year, because that's when we started our discussion with H&amp;B on gas penalties. Uh, the coldness of...of last year and the warmness of this year, we're just later getting started with, uh, our gas revenue there. The other two charts is really sanitation, and then you see our harness track. And as we talked a minute ago, uh, some of the horsemen have held off coming as early as they did last year with the cold weather last year. They came in November. This year, it looks like they're coming late December. Uh, we still expect to hit our target of about 240 horses, 250 or less this past year. So, um, that's our charts and reports for, uh, from our report. If you have questions.
The roof on the building up here, anticipate any problems with it?
Yeah.
I don't like the... Any problems to be done with that?
I'm aware of some problems.
So we need to go what?
Yeah. Okay.
Anybody else? Ask if I go for it. Got it. I, uh, missed the citizen comments, so if you could give me the board, I could get citizen comments out the way. Please. Thank you, Mr. Hall.
I just wanted to go on the count.[1193.66][1193.66][laughter]
Ronnie Dowell.
Yes, yes, sir. Uh, Mr. Tim, uh, Mary's taken already by the U-Drag Grant, not 15, anyway, to be paid. It's already on the list and stuff, so I'm used to, uh, writing up. It's already on the list that we paid.
It is, right.
Because it's in bad shape, like I said, and I've been paid about fifty some years, and I'm trying to build a house on the property stuff. I'm gonna be into it.
Yeah, that street's really bad street. I'm glad it's on...made the list, yes.
Thank you.
John Robert Ross, Jr.?
This is it.
All right. How you all?
Doing good.
Uh, I'm listening at the city manager about the, uh, project that you all had going on. I was concerned about enough Lockton Street. You know, I see what the project had been done, but the road is in bad shape.
Well, they're not complete. It's gonna...they're gonna come back and can fix all that with pavement, okay? But they're not through digging on that road, okay?
Thank you.
Donna Richardson.
Hey, I just wanted to give an update on the chamber, if that's okay?
Sure.
Uh, we recently relocated our office to the Opera House, and just want to be sure everybody was aware of that in case I'm looking for us. And, um, we, uh, selected Abby's Barbecue for Business of the Month. In January, we'll be taking their photo on Thursday, if anybody's available, 2:00. We'd love to have you there. Uh, we had 50 entries for the Christmas parade. We're real excited about that. Um, we awarded La Cavana with the first prize on the best decorated float. And also, I wanted to mention that I attended the Farmer's Appreciation, um, December the 14th. Uh, was able to make a video of some pictures, videos that I had taken throughout the community of some farming that was going on at various volunteer classes we can. And that video is...I...I showed it that night at the Farmer's Appreciation. Bank, but Tim was there with me, too. And I've also attached it to our new website, so if anybody wants to see that, there's, uh, an icon that has a tracker on it, and you can click on that and see that farming video. Uh, we had a...recently had a downtown shoppers contest where we were encouraging people to shop downtown, our local merchants. We had placed boxes in eight merchant stores so that shoppers that spent over $20 had a chance to win a $100 chamber check. We had 102 entries during the Christmas season. It...the contest ran from December 14th to December the 18th, and, um, Latre memory was our winner. And, uh, I thanked her for shopping locally, and...and she said she intended to spend that $100 locally. So the merchants were real happy about that contest. We definitely plan to do some more contests like that. Uh, we've got some ribbon cuttings coming up at some new businesses. January 23rd, we'll be doing a ribbon cutting for Simply Seven Tulips and Treasures at 11:00 a.m. And on February the 12th, we'll be doing a ribbon cutting for Renee's Bar and Grill at 3:00. And we've also spoke with Rivertown Music and Conga Fast Food, but they're gonna let us know when they're ready for their ribbon cutting. Uh, we sold $1,905 worth of chamber checks in December to individuals and businesses, uh, for Christmas gifts. And we completed the harness track grant for the Buckhouse renovations. Uh, we sent back $8.67 that we did not use of the $12,000. So, uh, we were happy to report that, and like Tim said, the horsemen are real pleased with those renovations. And we went live on our new website, December 31st, actually, we're saying today, but, uh, we encourage everybody to go out and look at that website. It's Hawkinsville-Palaski dot F O R G. And it's consolidated C D County, Chamber, United Palaski, Rec Department, and we encourage anybody's comments and suggestions, because it's a work in progress. And that's it. Thanks.
That's great. Great.
I'd like to comment on that website, unified website also, because Donna and Sarah with the C, Chelsea and Judy with the C, they've done the...they've been the workhorses to make it happen. Although Middle Georgia Regional did a good job from a framework standpoint and getting it out there. The content these ladies have put on, they've done a great job. And it is a...it will always be an updated, uh, work in progress, because we wanted to give the most up-to-date information. Uh, you can pay your utility bills online on that website, but we encourage people to use it, and, uh, hopefully it'll be a good communication tool to get information out there. But these...these ladies have done a terrific job with that.
That's great. Thank y'all, though. Donovan?
Yeah. Um, I own Rivertown Music, and, uh, well, um, I have a problem parking downtown. Uh, my employees park on the side, and several businesses have their employees parked behind or on the side. And on Commerce Street there, there's, I mean, except for parallel parking, there's not a lot of parking. And, uh, some businesses, not saying names, but some businesses and their employees will park directly in front of other stores, including mine, and leave their car there for eight, 10 hours and blocking out my storefront, and, you know, and, uh, so I wonder if there's something that can be done, like a two-hour parking or something like that. I mean, uh, if it's any less than that, I mean, I give music lessons, and I use a lesson to go an hour. Sometimes I have back-to-back, you know, somebody bringing in themselves and their kid to take two-hour... Anything under that, you know, would interrupt business downtown. But, and so I don't want to, you know, interrupt business. And I don't...and I don't mind, like, um, other businesses, customers parking in front of my store, because they go in, they do their shopping, they come out, you know? But if, you know, people who work downtown, parking in front of other people's businesses and leaving their car for eight, 10 hours, that's kind of a, you know, a problem. I mean, that's, you know... And I get there's not much parking downtown, so I'm not trying to be a jerk. I'm just wondering if it kind of...
Is that something we can survey the chamber members on? Uh, how long they think parking should be, or...
I think it's more and more on the idea of, um, just research with either Middle Georgia Regional Commission or other communities about allowing employees to park in...in downtown. They should be able to park in the back or on the side or somewhere, rather than customer parking is typically in front of the stores, and...
Should be in there.
Uh, and some communities, it's where whatever your frontage is to the street, that's how many, uh, spaces you really get that's reserved for you, rather than... Although there may be an empty store in between you, uh, I think the discussion is employees parking in front of other people's businesses when they can park in the back.
Yeah, I'm...I'm on the same street, and...and I've seen that, too. Yeah. I've seen that.
So, uh, I'll be glad to do some checking around to see. We don't currently have an ordinance that would be able to talk with the business owners about that, but...
Well, like I said, I wouldn't want to do anything under two hours. I mean, because...
Right. I agree.
Because, I mean, I want people to shop downtown.
Well, we've got the karate studio down there. That probably is an hour, hour and a half, I guess.
And I don't mind other customers from other businesses parking in front of my store. I mean, because like I said, they shop, and...and I encourage it. I mean, I want people to come, you know, downtown, you know, but at the same time, I want the spots to be available for my customers, your customers who are down downtown.
Good point.
Let me look at that, and I'll report back to the commissioners on what other communities are doing for that same idea. Okay. I appreciate it.
Sure.
Ken, with that, I have to go, because I have someone running my business.[1692.26][1692.26][laughter]
Thank you for attending.
All right.
All right. Uh, next we got Dodge Wade report. Cheryl.
I'd like to let you guys update about our accomplishments, um, eating accomplishments. I heard you did a, um, your eating accomplishment, um, for last year. Um, this year we're having a meeting, we're starting in, we have a leadership meeting this week, um, where we get a capital in February, and we meet the governor and our elected legislators. And then next week, we'll have plenty plus new participants in the adult leadership Palaski tomorrow program, including three new Charles Johnson Scholarship recipients from the community. So we're really very proud of the fact that after five full classes, and over 100 classes tomorrow in the program, there's still a lot of interest in the DCS program. So January is gonna be, I think, a great start, so I give you here. Thank you.
Next.
Uh, some report, a lot of things still ongoing, but I guess the most important thing is to generate profits most important thing is two-day-a-week crisis, uh, we got going on right now, and, uh, that's the economic development and growth and jobs, and, uh, so it looks like twenty sixteen is starting off a good year, and it's still involved with a lot of regional authorities and, uh, we're joining you and now Central Georgia Department of Authority, I work for regional listeners, so, uh, everything's looking good.
Thank you. All righty, uh, finance director report.
I'll, I'll give that, before I do, Chuck Sullivan asked me to talk about Rivers Alive, uh, he's not able to be here, but they're having a cleanup on Saturday, January the sixteenth, uh, reporting Mile Branch at eight o'clock in the morning, there'll be, uh, breakfast provided and free t-shirts, and he is in need of some votes, uh, for this event, that's always a big event, but, uh, January the sixteenth, Mile Branch Park, uh, Rivers Alive cleanup.
Okay, thank you, thank you for that.
And, um, like I said, I'll, I'll give the, um, finance report, if we have any questions, we'll ask Judy, exactly over there, so, uh, what you have on the front page is the, uh, revenue and expenses for different funds that we have for the city of Hawkinsville, uh, our revenues totaled six hundred and forty-three thousand, eight hundred and fifty-three dollars, uh, expenses five sixty-nine, five thirty-four, with a fund balance of eighty-seven thousand, seven hundred and sixty-six, uh, dollars, and, uh, you can see that the balance of that came in the general fund, uh, where, once again, our gas fund, uh, was short, uh, and that's just, uh, for the second month in a row, so we, we paid the gas at a higher rate from the previous month, although we're billing at a lower rate because the gas is going down typically right now, so right now, gas is as cheap as you'll find for natural gas, so, uh, but that, that will cycle out, and we'll be, uh, positive going forward.
Yeah, I just read where, uh, George Powers issuing a, with all of our electric bills should be about five dollars less a month, uh, the PSC just approved that, and it was because of the price of natural gas for George Powers, so, we're gonna save some money there.
Okay, uh, you can see our special revenues, we talked about last month, you guys typically didn't see this, and that revenue is the rental, uh, fee on the cider oxydrop plant that we get in, and then the expenses, the, the check we write for the spec building.
What's the balance on that?
Uh, June thirtieth, one sixty-six oh thirty.
One sixty-six on June thirtieth.
Mm-hmm.
Minus nine dollars a month.
Yeah, it pays out in early two thousand seventeen.
Yeah, that's right, I don't know the year, so.
Be nice to get that behind us.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, next page is the cash in hand, uh, you can see, uh, where those balances are for each one of those, uh, where, uh, about half of that, not quite half of it is washed money that's, uh, sitting out there that's designated for certain projects, and, uh, you can see those, uh, but, um, total of a hundred, uh, a million three in, in the bank, but six hundred and twenty-two of that is, uh, designated and sploshed or shipped in, uh, for those that we can use it for. Okay, and the last page there on finance, give you a breakdown of the, the harness track facility, uh, what that is for the month of December, seventeen thousand, six hundred and eighty-nine dollars, uh, so far for the month of December, and then year-to-date, around twenty-nine thousand, you see a new line there that just means income is selling the waste, so we had, uh, sales to the old muggy, uh, banks, he was buying that for us, so, one of the, good place to put it.
Okay, thank you, Tim, uh, commissioner comments?
I don't have anything.
Uh, I'd like to thank Tim and everyone for helping me get a board and get, get going with this, I've asked him a bunch of questions over the past several months, and he's always answered every question I had, and, and, uh, working with everyone, uh, one, uh, thing I'd like to mention is we, is, can we call DOT or get DOT involved, I've had a lot of people complaining about right in front of Pond's Motel at that intersection, where the pavement's on.
Oh, yeah.
There's a real bad bump, plus there's a big, uh, pothole right there in front of White Brothers, is there any way since that is, they did maintain that we could give them a call and see if they could work that out for us? That's pretty much all I have.
Okay, uh, my biggest blow for two thousand fifteen was, of course, Mitchell Woods, um, we all wanna continue praying for his, him and his, I mean, his family, so, first do that, uh, next I want to ask Tim, uh, if you would, to, uh, get a GMA representative down for, uh, maybe, for us, for the commission meeting.
For commissioners?
Yes, for all of us commissioners, yes.
Well, I got a card on it, one that we need to contact, if you want it, I'll give it to you.
What specifically do you want them to cover?
Um, retirement.
Okay.
Retirement.
I do.
Okay, that's all I got.
Okay.
Uh, I'd like to let down, welcome Mr. Clark aboard, look forward to, I'm working with you, and also, I'd just like to say how much we are gonna miss Mitchell, Mitchell was, uh, he was a rock, man, and, and, be very, very much missed.
Absolutely.
That's all.
Of course, I wanna echo all those sentiments, both on Mitchell and on Ken, um, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Uh, you answer that, um, I've got a couple of things, one is, the Plasque County Boards of Education asked me to bring this tonight, the, um, some of you know the history, the, the, the lot up there where the Board of Education sits, and our water tower sits, years and years and years ago, that was a city-owned school, and apparently, over the course of the years, I don't think our lawyer nor their lawyer can find where it actually got transferred from the city of Hawkinsville to the Plasque County Board of Education, so, we, they have, their lawyer has done up this quitclaim deed for us to execute, which, what we did is we got a surveyor involved, and I got the surveyor to survey out our water tower, so this quitclaim is for that lot, which is, we all know it's theirs, it's Plasque County Board of Education's, but just to clear up the title issues, this quitclaim deed will deed to Plasque County Board of Education a quitclaim on that entire lot minus our water tower.
Water tower.
So, I, I'd like to make a motion that we approve this, that we execute this quitclaim deed, uh, so I'll make that in form of a motion.
And do I have a second?
I'll say it.
Any discussion?
Any problems on that, Tim?
No, I, it's just, you know, how does it get this far back that, and we don't know, we don't own the property, we don't own the property, you know?
I've, I've been, I've been coming up with them about turning the money, but, uh, I don't think we want it to be that.
Do we need to get our attorneys to look, just look at it, just like, before we do do something?
I mean, I took a glance at it before the meeting started, I mean, I haven't, I've done any real research comparing property descriptions in the courthouse or anything, but, you know, on its face, and based on what Shelley's told me, I don't have a problem with it.
We also had on behalf of the city a surveyor look at it, and, he, he, he's, he, our surveyor actually came up with the, the legal descriptions for their attorney to use, their attorney just did the legal work, so we, we had to pay for it.
You need time to look over this? No, I mean, do they need, is this time-sensitive for them?
I mean, this has been going on for a hundred years, so I don't see where I'm going.
I didn't know they had anything going on.
Nah, I don't think so, I think it just came to everybody's attention and thought, well, let's clear it up, you know, I mean, let's get it right.
Let's, uh, let him take a look at it, I'll do it next month if that's, just to.
How about just making a motion table there?
Okay, I'll make a motion to table.
And I'll second.
Okay, I want that, let's table it.
What else you got, Jenny? Um, Tim, when do we do board appointments, I mean, I know we did the gas board, but other than, for example, Archway and United Pulaski and all those board appoint, the, the boards that we sit on?
Right.
Do we do those in January, or?
Uh, the boards of the commission, different ones that y'all sit on?
Yeah.
I do not know, let me get you that answer, I don't.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, and, and guys, y'all think about that, I guess, for our next meeting, as far as, I know we have a representative on Archway, I, I've done that in the past, would love to continue to serve in that capacity, um, I think you're our United Plasque representative, um, what are the, okay, I know we, in December, we did the regional commission with you two guys, what about, like, middle health, is that, is that a, is that a city appointment? Is that a county appointment?
No, I think that's just, I don't think it's either one, I think.
Okay, that's, they, they appointed that, okay.
They appointed that, yes.
Is it, what other, do we have a representative on D D A, or?
Yes, we do, I think, I believe we do.
I don't think so, but y'all, y'all should, I, I think y'all should have.
Okay, is, is there a slot open?
Well, Mitchell was on D D A.
Yeah.
Cause he handled all the money for them.
Okay, all right, so D D A is something we need to look at for next month, um, what, could y'all think of any other boards off the top of your head that we, that we sit on, that, I just think we ought to appoint all of them.
There's another board that I sit on, but, uh.
I think at Hawkinsville Development, you and Phil, so you're gonna, and so you're gonna have.
So we didn't get Phil, name off.
So that's, that's one, um, now, I know, Rich is still here, I think I still, I'm not positive, but I think I, I'm still on the Middle Georgia Regional Development Authority, but that's a county appointment, I don't think that's a city appointment, um, anyway.
You got the Red Board, I don't know, y'all have, uh, four parties on?
I don't think we got any of us sitting on that board, though.
Also, we have the, uh, Lee, uh, Correctman, um, Plasque Hawkinsville Development Authority, and Plasque County Development Authority, so.
Betty, would you look at all the, the, the authorities?
Yeah, I'm looking, I'm, I'm, I got them out already, looking for next month, see who all come up.
Right.
I got all the numbers out already, and, um, see who all, that's really, I know whoever.
Well, I just think it'd be a good thing annually to, to, gotta reaffirm those positions or change those positions or whatever, but, I just think we ought to look at those each time, and, and certainly on D D A, we need to look it out, um, I've got a couple things in, under, um, personnel, but that's for executive session, I don't have anything else, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, are we going into executive session?
Yeah, I would like to.
Have a motion for that?
Yeah, I, I'd like to make a motion that we go into executive session for discussion of personnel, land acquisition, and pending litigation.
About a second.
Say it.
All in favor?
Thank you all for coming.